... informal, probably in the library, you know.
SpaghettiOs is really great.
But I think I am in the process of just designing.
Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Mon... No, Thursday, December fourteenth.
December fourteenth.
Twenty.
Oh, yes, I noticed we had a little date issue.
Oh, it was. Twenty seventeen, if we could please rise for our pledge of allegiance.
Oh, boy. Obviously, we were stealing from another.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's what she said Monday.
See, she's reading it.
Just to see what would happen.
Thursday.
Okay, we will begin with our consent agenda. I will make a motion to approve regular session minutes of October twelfth, twenty seventeen, public relations minutes of November twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen, budget and finance minutes of November fourteenth, twenty seventeen, and the special school committee meeting of November eighteenth, twenty seventeen.
So moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We also have to, I didn't see the warrants, make a motion to accept warrants twenty-four P eighteen and twenty-five V eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Hey, Chloe's here tonight.
Hi.
With us, how are you?
I'm good.
Good.
How's everyone? Yeah, okay.
How's things going?
Good.
Good.
Um, so, the PSAT scores came out today, so.
Oh.
Yeah, we had a little media on that, you got your scores. You just got an email from the college board. Um, the girls and boys basketball teams are starting off. I don't think the girls had their first game yet, but boys have a game tomorrow at six-thirty at the high school.
And the girls have a away game tomorrow.
They have an away game, and the boys won their.
First game.
Yes, their first game.
First at Fenwick, yeah?
Yes, it was, it was a great game.
It was right to the end of it. Right, right to the buzzer, right?
Yeah. And who are we playing tomorrow? The girls are playing Manchester Essex. So the girls are at Manchester, okay, that's good. That's off to a good start, hopefully the girls will have a good night, too.
I know the band concert is tonight at seven, and middle school concert, I believe, is the choral concert, middle, for middle school is next week, I think, on Wednesday. And I know the high school one was last week, and, yeah, that was fun. It got us into the holiday spirit.
Did it?
Yeah. Um, I think everyone is just looking forward to next week and vacation, I know I am. And, but what student council is doing, we're getting ready for our catwalk for cancer, which is probably gonna happen in March. Yeah, this past week I was contacting businesses and they seemed to wanna participate in our fashion show, so that seems great, good. And we're probably gonna, um, put a sign-out sheet tomorrow, see how many people are willing to participate in it, and it should be a fun event. And, oh, the key club and peer leaders are doing their annual toiletry, and they're raising, like, they're doing canned food supplies and mittens and hats for Trestle Way.
Oh, nice.
That's fun, it's in the main office, and, yeah.
That's good. Yeah, that's good. Consent, we can send some things on, very civic-minded, that's good projects. That is good. What other sports are going on?
Wrestling.
Wrestling, right, and they won.
I think they won their first.
I did see that, yeah, on the Royals Twitter account, so that's good. Hopefully they'll have a great season like they did last year.
Yeah.
Because they did really well under.
They went pretty far last year, didn't they?
Yeah.
Yes, they did, they had a good season last year.
Well, that's good. Okay, well, thank you for coming. Okay, is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about anything on the agenda this evening? Nope, okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to have an update from our athletic director, Mr. Guy Prescott, regarding the fall sports.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thanks for having me. Ryan sends his regards.
Sure.
He's been, he's been overworked and, uh, giving him a break tonight.
He's a hard-working.
Hard-working young man, that's correct.
Thank you for this update.
Hopefully everything's there, we did the best we could.
Yep.
Um, I, I do like to put in all the awards from the, the team awards, as well as the Cape Van Lee League awards, you know, so I'll highlight some, I, I don't have to do all for our purposes here, but you do have a copy of them. So, field hockey, we had a new coaching staff, as you all know. Uh, we welcomed Megan Hildebrand and Melanie Clinton to our staff, and they did a, a great job as far as I could see, brought a lot of enthusiasm and expertise to the field, and, uh, really, um, got us going in, in the right direction. Um, and I think we're gonna continue to progress, so their overall record was five, nine, and two. Uh, kudos to Grace McDonald for the MVP for offense, Jen Lerner for defense, Nadia Sawstik, she was the unsung hero, and two Cape Van Lee golf stars, Jen Lerner and Grace McDonald.
Great.
Golf team, um, they had, believe it or not, one of their best seasons, and it, it, the record's two and nine, but we haven't won many golf matches at all in the, in the last five or six years, I would say. Uh, so their two wins were great, I did get a chance to see one of them and see the kids play. We are at a new course at the Crystal Lake in, in Havre. Um, it was a great experience for us, I do realize it was, uh, a ride, it's a distance away, and that was kind of a problem, but, um, given the circumstances, we, we did the best we could. They were very hospitable and, you know, they really took us in, and the kids had a, a great season, a great experience, so.
Guy, do we, I can't remember, do we co-op with anybody in golf?
We're with Whittier Tech.
We are with Whittier.
Yeah.
Who do, who are we, we were, who were we with before, though, Guy? Did we have, weren't, weren't we in a co-op, and then they had enough kids, so then we had to get our own team?
I would think, I think it was Kentucky.
Penn Tucket, it was Penn Tucket, right, and then, so.
That's been shifting a little bit, yeah.
Yeah.
So last, not last year, the, the year prior, our numbers, the, our tryout numbers were through the roof, you know, we had something like thirty, thirty-two kids came, came out for the team, which is.
For golf?
Yeah.
Wow.
Which is outrageous, 'cause it, I think it was.
Can't have thirty-two kids on a team.
Yeah, it was like the first year of the co-op, and, and people just come out and they understood it was a no-cut sport, but, you know, we had to eventually make cuts, 'cause we couldn't do it, you know, and that, that, that was one of. Yeah, it was one of the issues with the, the country club here, we had too many kids, and we were trying to, you know, work that out, and, you know, it created a little bit of, uh, an issue for us, but, uh, this year, the numbers were low, you know, so, but the kids that came out, you know, they had a, they had a great experience, good season, and, and I think that's gonna continue to grow, too.
Was the, was the move to Havre that caused the shift in numbers, or just sort of the timing?
I'm not sure, because, um, the, um, co-op is in Havre.
Oh, yeah.
So Whittier's in Havre, so for them, it would have been, it would have made more sense, but I, I, I'm not sure why the numbers dropped, I just, I think it was just so abnormal the, the year before. You know, we were struggling to put, you know, five to seven kids on a team with the co-op.
Right.
And then thirty kids showed up, you know, and, and, you know, we did the best we could, and then this year, I think, just the kids that really wanted to play, maybe, uh, decided, you know, we're gonna really come out and do it, so they, we're, that's a young team this year, they were very young, so these kids are, are really into it, and, uh, they're gonna be coming back, you know, a couple of them are really good, too, so. Uh, volleyball was also, uh, a new coaching staff this year. Alexis Bedad was the head coach, and Kathy Pingree, a Georgetown resident, was the junior varsity coach. They did a great job as well, um, helped building this program, it is a young program, uh, our numbers were really good, uh, and, um, it looks good for the future, the kids this year really learned a lot of stuff, it looked like, um, you know, they really took to the coaching, and, uh, we played a real aggressive schedule and did, and did pretty well, the record is, you know, it is what it is, it's gonna get better. Uh, again, there are a lot of young kids on this program that are gonna come back, and, uh, it looks pretty good. That's, that's also a co-op with Essex Tech. Um, they could, I mean, um, is that Essex Tech? Yeah, I think so. Um, so that's, um, no, that's, is it Triton, who's that volleyball club, do you know volleyball club?
I'm sure, I know it's not Essex Tech.
I think it might be Triton.
I think it is Triton.
I think it's Triton.
Yeah.
Um, so they're, you know, if their numbers continue on their side, there may be a point where we have to break and go to, to teams.
Yeah, it was challenging this year, 'cause there were a lot of kids on the JV team.
Yeah.
You know, so it was six play at a time, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I.
They rotate, they don't rotate that quickly, but they rotate a little bit.
They had more than two additional teams, right, so it was tough, yeah. It was hard to, it was hard to cut, right, you, you could have cut the middle school kids.
Yes, we, we were left with the debate at the end of what, what to do, but I talked to, I talked to their pa, the parents, and they felt it was better for their kids to be on a team, learn, and, and practice in that environment.
Get to practice every day. Sometimes if you cut kids in the middle school, they don't come back.
Is the, the numbers on the back, are these Georgetown, for the co-ops, or are these the Georgetown numbers in the co-op, or is that total?
It's total.
Total participation.
Yep.
Okay.
So, in the, in the co-op, if we're the, if we're the home team, the host team, we don't differentiate who signs up, so they, they all sign up our way, they come to use our paperwork and all of our rules and regulations, and then, you know, we know that who they are, obviously. And then I cross-check with the other school on academics and, and other things, um, usually like physicals and stuff, so they are, we count them as our kids, you know. Uh, girls soccer, girls soccer had a good season, they had some, uh, very competitive games, they were in a lot of games that were, that were, came down to the wire, they finished just under five-hundred, just missed the playoffs, it was down the stretch. Uh, they did have a couple of really good, uh, wins in there as well, uh, the coach wanted me to point out, and, um, obviously, our goal is to, uh, progress it and to be a tournament team for next year. I would say all of our goals are to be a tournament team in, in all three seasons, so.
There's not a few seniors in soccer, though.
Yeah, yeah, we have, uh, we have a good crew that, that played a lot, and they'll be coming right up. Uh, boys soccer, we had Chris Burney, uh, we welcomed him to the staff and thanked him for his work, and he was a one-year, uh, stopgap for us, based on his schedule and our schedule, so, uh, he will not be coming back next year, so we will be advertising for, uh, junior varsity, um, soccer coach, boys. Uh, they finished two-eight and eight, and that is kinda abnormal. Uh, eight ties is a lot of ties in, in soccer, and, you know, they're just, you know, there are few wins away there from, from being five-hundred, you know.
Really, the games came down to just one point.
One goal, yeah.
It was, it was incredible.
It was.
Uh, they played hard, they, they, they were fun to watch, and, and, um, you know, we, we wish them the best of luck, obviously, um, for their tournament bid next year. Uh, boys cross-country, uh, had their best season ever, according to Coach Macy's, who's done an amazing job with that program, he runs the boys and the girls, I broke him out here for your purposes, uh, but they, they trained together, and, um, he has done a great job again. They, they had their best season competitively, they finished second place in the Division Six State Tournament out of twenty-four teams, and that was, that was amazing for, for our program. And, uh, they went on to finish twentieth in the All-State Meet, which you have to qualify to, to run in, and we did qualify, and we, I don't know if we've ever qualified before.
No, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
I talked to Brian about that, he said no.
Yeah, so that was, uh, that was exciting. Um, girls, uh, cross-country did well, their total score does not indicate that, but they, they compete by numbers, so you need X amount of kids score, we don't have X amount of kids, you know, we have, uh, half that number, and they, they're really good, and they work hard, but they, it's hard for them to score as a team in the girls' competition, you know. Charing did very well, we did, we, the year before, we were coming off the, the championship season and the Disney, Disney World trip, and, you know, everything was right with the world, and, uh, and then, they, they did well, they, I went to all the competitions this year, and it was exciting. They did great, they finished second in the first one in the Cows, and they really looked good, and, um, and then they had a little hiccup, small hiccup in, in the state tournament, and unfortunately, the judges, uh, were kinda heavy-handed, I thought. And, uh, they, they didn't push us on to the, to the, um, to the Allstate, so, uh, they did very well. Football, had a good season, finished five and six, we also qualified for the state tournament, um, and we had some exciting play out there, some great players, and, uh, that is a great record for us in football, it's very competitive, as everybody knows, and, um, it took everybody's effort to, to get to that level, you know, there was a lot of injuries and a lot of highs and lows in the program, and I thought they fought through it, uh, valiantly, and, uh, kudos to the coaching staff, a lot of them are unpaid assistant coaches, they're volunteer, and they, it really made a difference having that those guys and their expertise come down and help us out, you know, when they could, so I think that helps our program, um, get better. We still would love to have more numbers in the program, uh, because it is a, a numbers-driven, uh, game. And is that the last one?
Yep.
Yeah.
So will we be staying in that same football, um, league that we changed into?
So, yeah, we're, we're an independent team in football, so it's a non-league technically, so we pulled out of the league.
So you play the ones that are considered independent, too, then?
Well, you can, we can play teams in other leagues, they would just be called non-league games for us.
Right.
So we'll, we'll never have a, an opportunity to play for Cape Van Lee League Championship in football. We've won one, uh, with the Esposito brothers and, and those guys.
Was that two thousand and two?
So.
Uh, may, uh, maybe, uh, maybe three, three or, three or four.
Is there a chance, if they get the numbers back up, that we would go back into Cape Land, do you have to, uh, Cape Van, do you have to apply for that, or how?
Yep.
How does that work? Do you have to prove that you can play in that division?
Um, yeah, that's, that's part of it, I think, uh, we, we have to prove that we wanna be in it, you know, because we've pulled ourselves out of it. So I think the rest of the, you know, twelve teams would be a little skeptical of us, like, alright, so now you have a good team, so you're gonna come back in, and then what, then two years, you're gonna pull back up? So it, 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 uh, it affects them, uh, because of, of the, there's a, there's a small and a large grouping, and they're competing for two championships, so if we insert back in, it makes way, a team might have to go up or down in the league, so there are some ramifications. I would say we have an excellent relationship with the Cape Van League, play in, play in all sports, and, um, we, we could go back, I would think.
But we'd have to have more numbers, is that what you're saying?
You'd have to be competitive, you'd have to be able to be competitive.
Yeah, I think the numbers is, the numbers hurt.
Yeah.
And, and we're not alone in that, in the Cape Van League, so, you know, I, I, I've been to our underclass football games, uh, and there, some of the other teams had twelve kids come off a bus, and I said, where's the other bus? You know, they had twelve kids, and, and we had, you know, fourteen or something, I mean, football, there's eleven playing at the same time, so. You know, it's the same kids.
They get hurt, yeah.
One kid gets hurt, you know, coach is coming in, or the trainer's gonna get in there, somebody's gotta play.
Right.
So that, it gets a little, it gets a little, um, you know, sketchy if you're doing two levels, which you really have to have in football, you have to have that under, uh, that, the JV level or freshman level to develop through, you know, the kids just can't come out and, and start a varsity football game, you know, traditionally.
Are there any co-ops, Guy, that you know of?
There are, Rockport and Manchester are co-opted, um, there are a couple more.
Okay. And what about the cross-country? Um, I know, I know I heard a few parents concerned about that program.
Our cross, uh, cross-country?
Yeah.
Concerned in.
Like that it won't, um.
Continue?
Is it cross-country, or is it track?
It's probably in cross-country, 'cause that, he's built that program.
It's cross-country, but, um, so we're, do we co-op cross-country?
Nope.
Nope, we would not do it.
We're, uh.
That we, that we.
Uh, track, we're, we're the, we're the guest.
Okay.
Co-op in track.
Right, so what's going on with that? Is it, as far as, didn't the people that wear guests of?
Essex Tech.
May have their, may have their numbers and don't need us?
Uh, that was some rumors that were, that were going around, it's not confirmed, as far as I know, we're still co-op with them. We've, we've expressed our interest, Coach Macy's and myself, to their administration and coaches.
Yep.
And told them that we would, you know, like to re-up with them for the next two years. They, that'll probably be decided this winter, there'll be a, a co-op form that would have to go in to, to make it official. But I, I don't have the, I don't have the knowledge that they're planning on dumping us, 'cause we keep asking them, you know, if they really knew that, yeah, if they really knew they were gonna go in that direction, they could tell us now.
Do we have a backup plan if they do?
We would, we would appeal to all, all local schools, yeah.
Because we used to deal with Ipswich, right?
We had a great, we had a great co-op with Ipswich, and the MIA broke that up probably five years ago, maybe six years ago, and I was the athletic director at the time of that, and they were changing their co-op rules and regulations, and they said, you know, they, we've, we've never won anything with Ipswich, no championships, league titles, or anything, and then they break up our co-op, and we, I, I went down in front of the MIA, in fact, you know, in an appeals process with the, uh, Tom from Ipswich, and we appealed to them, that, you know, this is a great working relationship, you know, our kids know their kids, that they've been running with each other for years, we don't have a track, we don't have, uh, the facilities, and our numbers are, are relatively low for that sport, that's what, it's a large-numbered sport, and they broke us up, so.
That's too bad.
You know, but the co-op rules have changed since that point, uh, they are looking at, it's more of a numbers-driven business now, so they give us recommended numbers, if you have, uh, twenty-four kids in your program, then you can apply for a co-op, or if you end up with X amount of kids over this, then they won't re-up your, your co-op after two years. Now they cut it to one- or two-year co-ops, so you, you can't get a long-term co-op.
So is this the second year with Essex Tech?
Yes.
Okay, so hopefully they'll.
Yeah.
They'll sign on with another, when do they usually tell us?
It's usually, it's six months out, you're supposed to have the paperwork in, so I'm thinking it will be this winter. It would have to be the winter to get, to really get it in for the, um, spring.
Right, okay.
Uh, those participation numbers, if you wanna just take a look, uh, you could see there's no drastic number, like, up-down, um, that's based on last year to this year's.
Other than golf.
Uh, other than golf, correct, and, um, it just, to, to me, it just, it just highlights that, that the numbers are what they are, you know, they're not really, um, they're not really higher or not really lower, they're pretty consistent. We, we did a, um, thing before where we looked at like a five-year, uh, numbers, um.
Like a forecast?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it was, it was pretty, it was, it was pretty average, I mean, not average, but it was, it was even across the board with little fluctuation, and then, you gotta look at the, the kids in the classes, so if the class size goes down, the numbers obviously are gonna go down, it's a small percentage, but it, it matters, and if the class sizes bump up, then we get a little bump up in our participation numbers, but they've been pretty steady. Um, we, we obviously would like more in certain sports, and, um, you know, we haven't had to cut people in most of our sports in the last couple of years, so that's pretty good, too.
Yeah, nothing jumps out at me, other than the golf.
Which was an anomaly.
And so will that, will we also continue next year with, um, Crystal Lake?
Yes.
They, they want us next year, too?
Yep, I met with the, I met with the, uh, the pro and the owner of Crystal Lake after the season to go through, you know, a review process, see how our kids did the coach, and, um, you know, how it all worked out, and they were, they were ecstatic to be able to host us, they're really big champions of junior golf, and, uh, they just love to see the kids coming out and playing and, um, competing on their course, so they, they were really good. We're very happy to be there.
Yeah, that was nice that they were able to.
Guy really worked hard on that, because it, it, all summer, we were sweating that out, thinking, okay, golf season's gonna start, and we don't have an option, I even met with the, with the gentleman at the Black Swan, right? So, you know, I, I, I really applaud the fact that you were tenacious about that, you know, we did not give up on that, 'cause real, otherwise, what was our choice gonna be?
We didn't have a choice.
We didn't have a choice.
We were maybe gonna disband the program.
Right, because he had tried to.
Which is so difficult, because we all, we all know that once you disband something like that, it's so hard to get back.
That's right.
Right.
So that was good, thank you.
So just a quick winter preview, I didn't put it down there, but we did welcome, uh, some new coaches to the, to the staff, both boys and girls, basketball coaches are new this year, um, and Hillary Glenn is the, uh, girls' coach, and Josh Kelty is the boys' coach, uh, off to a good start, you guys were talking about it earlier. Boys won Monday, tomorrow's the first, uh, game for the girls, they're away, and the boys are home, both playing Manchester Essex, and wrestling is, is off to a good start, they had a third-place finish in a tournament over the weekend, and they, uh, beat Mall the Catholic, um, yesterday by a pretty good score, so very encouraging. Their numbers are, are down from last year, um, we are co-op with Ipswich, uh, for wrestling, the Ipswich numbers are down.
Right.
And, um, there's a couple of reasons for that, but some of it was academics, and, um.
So our numbers are pretty much the same, the wrestlers?
No.
They're down, too?
We're down just a little bit.
So Georgetown's down a little, and then Ipswich is down.
Yeah, so we're forfeiting right now, I think, between three and four weight classes to start.
Which hasn't happened in the last several years.
It's a bummer.
It's mostly big kids, so, you know, only big kids that wanna.
Shave your, you know, you might.
Yeah, yeah. My wrestling days are over. I could barely, uh, sleep at night, my shoulder still hurts. So that's, uh, that's where we're at.
That's good.
Great.
Yep.
Well, thank you.
Looks good.
Thank you.
I know, and things are going well with the partnership, and, yeah, I'm glad we got the trainer, I think a lot of parents are.
Yeah, the trainer's, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, that is, that is gonna work out well, he's a good kid, um, he's just getting his feet wet, meeting the, the players and the coaches and stuff, uh, we've changed the, the room, the new trainer's room is, is to the left of the weight room now, we, we converted that room, uh, to a full trainer's room, he's got all his supplies down, they would just re-up his, um, his actual, uh, some of his specialty training supplies that he needs. But, uh, you'll see him at the games, he'll be there tomorrow night, he has been working with our kids at practice, he also has been doing, um, a lot of the concussion testing for us, where it was, um, myself and Cheryl and Ryan were doing some of the testing, uh, but, uh.
They all do windows.
It was ironic, the guy with the most concussions is now giving concussion tests. It's ironic.
Wear a lot of hats, don't you?
So I'm glad we have a professionals taking over that, uh, responsibility, and, um, he, he's really good, he knows how to read the results. We, we wouldn't read the results, we could administer the test, because it's a computerized test, and we have the software, which was a problem that we.
That was another summer project.
Yeah, that we resolved, um, and then, we could do the test and print them and give them copies to take to their doctors and stuff, which, that's what we're doing, but, uh, he has the ability to actually read the results, to make a, you know, to make a determination if, if the, their memory speed and things were, were good, or better, or, or worse, and then he could make a quick decision, and yes, no, you know, or you need to go back to see your doctor, you know, before we clear it. So that, that piece is, is really big, you know, and then the, the other piece of just, you know, taping kids prior to games and rehabbing kids that are injured, you know, through the season, we didn't have a lot of that in the, uh, fall, so we're really looking forward to having that, you know, the rest of the year.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, he's a, he's a nice kid.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's very diligent, uh, it seems very knowledgeable.
Good addition.
And so the partnership is going well between you and Ryan, you're feeling a little bit of relief and help with things, and.
If you ask him, yes, uh, no, no, yeah, things are great, uh, he's a great kid, yeah.
But you're feeling a little bit of a relief?
Yes.
A little bit of things taken off your, your shoulders?
Yes.
Well, that's good.
He's not threatening to jump off the bridge this year.
Not saying something.
So, you know, listen, it's, it's a tough business, I'm not gonna lie, it's, it's time-consuming, it's tough, there's a lot of things that have to happen every single day. It's, it's time-consuming, it's tough, there's a lot of things that have to happen every single day. So yes, he's helping a lot, Cheryl Larry's helping a lot in her, in her role, she's, she's great, you know? Uh, so we're all, you know, pitching in, there's still a lot of work to do. It's, it's, you know, it's like a mountain that we're, we're, we're climbing, so, you know, yeah, it's, it's, it's good.
Great, well, I'm excited for the winter season.
Should be good. I just, my only question about the winter is we lost some seats in the, in the gym and, um...
And I know Josh is big about wanting to get the Blue Crew back and to get as many people, you know, at those games. So yeah, that will, I think, we lost how many?
I'm not sure how many, but...
It was about forty seats. Yeah, it was about forty seats.
We upgraded the, um, the gym and the, and the stairs.
That was last year, right?
Yeah, but he's just saying he, that it hasn't really been a problem, but the coach is really trying to get people to come, so they're anticipating.
More people coming.
There's less seats than there were in the old days.
But that was a long... Yeah, but we did find last year with the seats.
Right, but we, we didn't have the recruitment for the kids coming, so...
Yeah, the Blue Crew is back, the Blue Crews.
Well, they'll be back if they're respectful and they follow the rules and stuff, which, you know, I've talked to some of them, um, but, you know, there's no... You don't just come down and scream at the opponent. I mean, that's, that's not what high school athletics is all about.
Share on our kids, right.
So I just tell them, I said, just do what you're supposed to do, come down, be loud, share on your kids in a positive manner, and we have no problems. If they wanna do different things, that's not what we're there for, we're there to play basketball, not, you know, watch these kids do those things. So the kids will be alerted, and then the kids will be thrown out if, if necessary, so... Uh, I hope it's not the case, I hope they understand, I think they do. And I hope they, they're respectful, and we'll take it from there.
In the past, they have been.
Most of them, yeah.
Yeah, most of them.
Most of the time, yeah.
There's always been little issues, sure.
Yeah, out-of-town teams do notice when something is, is awry, or the spirit isn't really where it, it should be, not as positive.
Sure. Well, even as spectators, when we go to away games, we definitely, we don't appreciate it either when their kids are disrespectful to our kids, so I would hope that everybody would be on the same page, the parents and the kids.
That's what we're working towards, right? There has to be an understanding and, and it has to be, you know, just, it just can't be, um, a militant state either. You know, because the, people that have fun as well, so you wanna...
Well, and you have a lot of young families coming with their younger kids.
I noticed that this last year.
I remember that years ago, that people would be coming with their little kids to watch the varsity players, which is great to see that. You know, it's a cheap night out and fun, and get some pizza and...
Also, even to have the GAA, uh, basketball kids come watch.
Yeah, they have been coming, yes.
Yeah, that's great. Well, that's good. Well, thank you for that update.
Okay, thanks a lot, have a good night, everybody.
I appreciate you coming out, too. I'm not gonna stay for the rest of the meeting.
Yeah, I'll be in the back taking notes.
Sure.
I gotta go feed kids, so I'm gonna...
We've got hungry kids at home.
That's important.
Thank you.
Want to do Sean next?
Yes. Sure. We have the, um, food service director, Sean Riley's here.
Tried us with a lot of things.
Yep, so you've got four things from Sean. Yep, thank you for all this information.
Yeah, it's exciting. How's everyone?
Great, great, how about yourself?
Good, good.
Thank you for allowing us to, uh, come to the cafeteria today.
Yeah, no, anytime, it was long overdue, I think more visits would be better. Yeah?
Yeah.
Welcome anytime.
I have to say, I've only heard great things about the food.
All right, thank you. That's good.
No, it's great.
The, uh, both teams at both schools try very hard, they work very hard, and they're proud of what they do. And it shows, it really does. Um, we've made pretty good strides in our participation, which we'll go over. Um, but the action plan is something we're gonna start off with, it's gonna be our basis for what we're gonna talk about tonight, so... The first focus area on the action plan was to increase participation, which we have done, and we'll get into that a little bit later. But we've, uh, changed the flow at Penbrook, so the lines aren't as long, it's easier for the students to come in, get their food quickly, circle out, we move the registers out into the floor of the dining hall, so there's no line backups. That's helped tremendously, so there's like a three-to-five-minute wait, which sounds like a long time, but it was a lot longer before. So we're happy about that, and, uh, everything seems to be going smoothly at Penbrook. At the middle high school, we changed the flow there as well. So that seems to be working well, as you saw today, uh, the paninis are a huge hit. And it's a made-to-order station, so there's gonna be a little bit of a wait there. But that's kind of the novelty of that station as well, that it's being made for you, from bread to ingredients and toasted. So we're not making pre-made sandwiches and trying to pawn them off on people, it's what you want, so that's a good thing as well. So, let's see, we have the, uh, if we wanna go item by item, on the first page on Penbrook, to optimize production, to make it more efficient, we have changed the schedules of the employees a little bit, to have them come in to prep earlier, to make sure everything is ready to go when the time comes around for the bell to ring. Uh, we have task lists and job flows for everybody in both kitchens. So everybody comes in, they know what to do, if you have to cover somebody else's station, you know what to do because it's right there. So it's easy, it's on-the-spot training if it's needed, but by now, pretty much everybody's cross-trained, so there's a benefit in that as well. So if somebody's out sick, we had two out sick today at the middle high school, you couldn't even tell. So there's a huge benefit to that. The increase in specialty themes at Penbrook is something that we're trying to bring back with Lucky Tray Days, things of that nature. Uh, we've done two Lucky Tray Days so far this year, I believe, um, and they're a huge hit. You know, we had some swag in the office that was, uh, just in the closet, that I found, good stuff, hats, mugs, uh, little water bottles and things like that, so we're using that as prizes, didn't cost anything, and...
What, a specific tray gets a lucky item?
It's a sticker on the bottom, so after the kids, they flip their tray over, if you have a sticker, you win.
Oh, that's cool.
Yep.
They wanna win a coffee mug? Is that a big...
Juice, it could be juice. But again, you know, it is...
Every time you win something, it doesn't matter what it is, you won.
Yeah, milk mug, um, but they do get excited about that, you know?
Maybe Emily will be coming home with a...
We gotta talk about chocolate milk.
Chocolate milk.
It's not there every day.
We're having a problem.
I can tell.
Strawberry milk is a bigger problem, it's harder to get than chocolate milk.
Well, that's, her backup is strawberry.
Strawberry.
And then she goes to white.
The dreaded white.
I get a report every day.
What's the matter with it?
It's just hard to get from our vendor. Uh, some, for some reason, they just don't carry as much strawberry, because it's more of a younger group that drinks it, so they just don't stock as much. Chocolate, a little bit more so, but the same reason, men just have white milk everywhere. So, we always have white, we usually have chocolate. And if it is a problem, I can look into shipping something that we have at the middle school down to Penbrook, get it covered. One bottle?
Just one.
One.
Just make sure there's one chocolate milk for the kindergarten lunch.
Put the name on it, yep. So we are looking at expanding our web-based, uh, information. We haven't got Facebook up and running as of yet, it's something that, for some reason, I just can't seem to get a point on and get it up and running. We're working on the rights from the previous director. Might have to blow it up and start all over again with a new Facebook page.
Have this hold in a hostage?
Not necessarily, it... It was built off of her personal account.
Oh, right.
So we're just, I don't know if we wanna just start clean, you know?
Yeah.
Um, I think probably so. Yeah, I think we have to. So that's something that will be going soon.
It speaks to a, a broader policy item conversation.
Mm-hmm, right. But we are using, you know, the, the morning announcements to get word out there and things that are going on. Everything is, is just everywhere in the dining hall. Advertised the new hours of operation for the cafe.
Oh, good.
Which were great, and the numbers there are climbing. First day was four people came in, and then, uh, the second day was twenty, so, you know, five times the business, which is good.
And it was, the day after that was a hundred.
The day after that was a half-day, we did zero. So, it's good. I haven't got the numbers back from today yet. And, uh, we, uh, changed the look and the feel of the cafeteria and the kitchen at the middle high school. We're in the process of getting some murals painted by the wonderful art department at the middle high. And I don't have a timeframe on that, but I'm sure they're working diligently, and it's gonna be fantastic when it's done. Uh, we put a suggestion box up that we had them paint and decorate as well, which is lovely. And, um, tallying the suggestions now, one of which was, uh, give Guy Prescott a raise, was the first one that was in there, so... He left, yeah. It's, uh, it's good, you know, the feedback is good. I don't know, we're gonna have that analyzed right now. But the feedback is good, a survey results will be coming up. Uh, the, to have that open conversation is great. I anticipate further down the road, having more of a verbal conversation with a lot more of the students, but right now, I'm still the new person. They don't really know how to read me, I'm in the dining hall all the time. They're busy, they have a half an hour for lunch, you know, they don't wanna stop and talk to the old guy, you know? So, um, I'm very excited how the suggestion box is working out, we're getting a lot of suggestions. So, that's working out for us. And, uh, you know, we, we painted or had the, the cafeteria painted at the middle high school to brighten it up a little bit. The new cafe has some bright colors on it, the new deli has a nice new sign, chalkboard, different colored chocks, things like that. Just try to liven, liven it up and bring some color into it. Again, the art department has been very helpful in that, so we're excited about that. Yeah, um, you know, we're trying new choices to get the participation up, where, from what I hear, Domino's is, is very popular, but some of the kids wanna try something different here and there, we're looking at different things that we can try, uh, whether it's a different pizza shop, or maybe not pizza, maybe we could do calzones, maybe we could do something in-house, um, to meet their needs. Again, it's gonna be trial and error with hopefully less error.
So with the pizza, it doesn't need to be wheat dough?
It, it does. We can serve white once a week, and the numbers get really complicated on how much it can actually be. So we could, we could get away with doing pizza non-wheat for our once-a-week non-wheat meal.
Okay. Oh, so you can just have a non-wheat meal one...
One day, one meal a week.
So how, so the pizza right now that we get from Domino's is wheat?
Yes.
And how is it?
I don't care for it.
I've never had wheat pizza before.
It's okay.
What are the numbers?
Let's put it this way, how does it sell?
It's our highest participation day of the week.
It's what?
It's our highest participation day of the week.
Okay, so it sells?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It sells, we buy forty pizzas for the middle high, and usually we have between five and seven left over. So we're selling thirty-five pizzas.
Can I ask you, Chloe, but you think of the pizza?
Um, I personally have not had the pizza, but I've had, I have a lot of the paninis, which are really good, a lot of the grilled cheese, and I had a burrito last week, which was really good, so, um, I, I like the food, but I personally have not had the pizza, so...
Do any of your friends, do, do you know other people that like the pizza?
Yeah, some of my friends do get the pizza, so I would say so.
Do they talk about a difference between like the Domino's they get in the store and the Domino's with the, the whole wheat?
No, I don't know. I think they like it.
I wonder if they know. It's just not a big topic.
I, I didn't know it was wheat.
They know. They're, they're, I think, from the feedback I've gotten, it seems like everything is whole wheat, no matter what it is.
Okay.
And that's close to accurate, um, you know, the, the regulations that we follow.
I did, I had it today.
Oh, you did?
That's right.
Was it good?
It was. It was good.
It looked good, it looked good.
It's tough, pasta's tough.
It needed, so I didn't, you know...
It's, it's the texture of it.
It's the texture of it, you won't see it on the menu again this year.
You were brave.
Um, so our participation rates, uh, we wanna take a look at.
But, but that whole wheat justice is no different at any other school.
That's correct.
As long as they're following the rules.
As long as they're following the rules, some people don't.
Right.
We do. We follow the rules.
Follow the rules.
We do.
Okay.
Oh, gotcha.
So we're gonna look at the participation?
We're gonna look at the participation. So we're looking on the front page, it's just breakfast, and it's, uh, sixteen versus seventeen years. And at Penbrook for breakfast, breakfast is interesting to look at. Uh, there's not a lot going into, there's not a lot of takers on breakfast. Um, it's a time thing, it's a I eat at home thing, i- i- there's a lot of reasons for it. Um, if you look at Penbrook, you know, in September, we were up, uh, three percent. And October up two, and November up two percent for breakfast, which is good, considering it's not a lot of takers for that. So i- i- it's a pretty solid increase. Uh, at the middle high school, we show a decline in September, one percent, which has to do with the fact of the bagels we were selling were not, they didn't meet that criteria to be a reimbursable meal, they were too big. So participation is built off of reimbursable meals. So we weren't ringing hardly, nothing was being rung as a reimbursable. If it was a bagel, it was just a regular à la carte sale, uh, which is still bringing in a little bit of money, but we don't count it as participation. Um, we were static in October from sixteen to seventeen. And then after Thanksgiving, we stopped using those bagels, and we see a one percent increase, because now we're using the standard the bagels we're supposed to use for sandwiches, breakfast sandwiches, egg and cheese, sausage, egg and cheese, things of that nature. And now it's all reimbursable again, so we're seeing an increase in our participation rates for breakfast.
So do we still have the partnership with the local business in town, or no?
We don't as of right now, we're waiting to get some paperwork cleared up with them.
So can they make the bagel the size that will be a reimbursable meal?
I haven't approached them about that, because we still have to get the billing issue sorted out.
Okay, but that, that's an interesting idea.
It is, it is. I'd like to keep the money, you know, if we can buy from a local vendor opposed to lenders, or whomever, you know, makes the ones that we're getting from Thurston, I'd rather do that. They do not have to be wheat.
They don't?
No.
You can get plain bagels.
We can get plain bagels.
Is that just because it's breakfast?
It's because, yeah, it's a breakfast, and that's what we use for our, our one meal as of right now. The ones we're getting from Thurston are wheat, but we can use white if we'd like. See, Thurston is the company from our tech bid, that they designed our six-hundred-and-twenty-two-item order guide for the regulations that the government puts on us. So they know what, they build it for us and say, this is what you can use. It kind of saves us a lot of time, and, and because they're on the tech bid, that's who we use for, for our main line supply. Um, second page of participation is lunch, so this is the, the important one. So at Penbrook, again, you see a decline, I'm not sure why, um, from sixteen and seventeen in September, it went down one percent.
A couple fewer days.
Yeah, but as a percentage, that really shouldn't affect it. Um, so it's like, going to October, we're up four percent, so I don't worry about September. And then we're up, um, another tick, so we're up five percent in November from prior year, which is good. So we're at thirty-eight percent at Penbrook, which is a pretty good number, it continues to climb steadily, and we're happy with that. And Sue and her team down there are doing a fantastic job. Uh, when I'm down there, the, everybody is in a good mood, everybody's happy, the kids are happy, everybody's as loud as can be. Um, you know, so, uh, that's a good thing. And, yep.
It's a happy loud.
It's a happy loud, exactly. The middle high school, I'm happy to report, uh, we're over forty percent participation all three months. So we were up four percent in September, six percent in October, and five percent for November. Now, just...
That's great.
It is. One percent at the middle high school is equal to about six and a half students. So you know, it's six point three two students. So you know, if you look at it as a percentage point, so you know, we're up about, you know, thirty students or something, you know, we're getting there. We're getting there. And again, we did that survey to try to build a participation, give them a voice, see what they wanted. We're still trying to figure out how we can implement some of the things that came back on the survey. But I have really good feelings. I, I don't want to, I don't want to say we're going to get to fifty percent before we get to fifty percent, but we're trending and, and it's a good trend.
That's what you're hoping for.
Well, in our action plan, we had said we wanted to see a three percent increase by December, right, from last year. And last year, the average was like thirty-six percent. So, so that's a significant, you know, increase.
They want sushi.
I think they've tried, they've taken sushi, Michael.
I'm looking at the sushi going.
It'll still be a surf and turf day. We'll, we'll do that on the same day. You know, there's some, some things that obviously we can't cater to, but it's all good. It, it shows us where, where they are, where their palates are, you know, what they'd really like to see.
Do you say high school, what does this mean?
Oh, vegetables.
A little bit of a difference.
Yeah, please list anything.
Take off the food you like off, all the vegetables.
Yeah, take off anything that's not a donut was another one that I got. But you know, we handed out six hundred and thirty-one surveys, uh, three hundred and eighteen came back, filled out. So you know, fifty percent, fifty-one percent.
What was the twelve percent that needed to be destroyed?
Um, for various, fresh, we'll say.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Inappropriate.
Yeah. So you know, going down, um, I highlighted some points here. So on the top on how often you eat lunch, uh, thirty-seven percent every day. So that's pretty much not really in line with our numbers, but you know, it, it's close. It's close. Eighty-one percent said they never eat school breakfast. But again, that's a timing issue. That's bussing. That's, you know, trying to get to school on time. You know, if you don't eat lunch, please tell us why. Thirty-one percent they bring it, said they bring it from home.
I did. I saw a lot of kids today with it from mom.
Yep. Yep. And seven percent said that the lines are too long, which the main line for the hot meal really moves. And I'd say I haven't timed it. I'm planning on it. I, I don't see any student in line for more than two and a half to three minutes in, in the middle line. The panini area, again, that's a gray area. It's different. It's a made to order station and there's always going to be a little bit of wait.
But even that, I didn't see kids waiting a long time in that line.
No. Yeah, it moves. Um, and forty-three percent decided not to answer that question. So you know, that's, that's not helping us out. Uh, if you eat school breakfast, uh, if you don't eat it, why? Because they eat it at home. So interestingly enough, when they, when we asked, um, what would it take for you to eat more school lunch? Uh, they said if it was less expensive. And that was a pretty common answer, which I mean, three dollars, you know, I, I understand it can be a stretch, you know, for, for some. But I, I was a little shocked, especially if it's a reimbursable, it's, it's cheaper than that. So I, I'm, I'm wondering, you know, what we can do to, to give the value. Okay. So you know, we can't drop our prices. So what can we do to give the illusion or give them what they want more? You know, I've seen students come through and just get a tray with one item on it. Where if you get everything we offer, that, the tray is full, you know, it's a very full meal. So we're trying to weed out the things that aren't being eaten. If it's not a big hit, we don't want it.
Do they pay cash or is this all the my school?
My school bucks typically.
So that usually the parents put the money on that stuff.
That was my second point. So it's a, it's a swipe of a card.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not actual money.
Right. It's Monopoly money.
Do that correlate with, to your point, it's a full tray if you take it all, but I'd be curious if the, it's too expensive correlates with the, not the serving sizes.
Being too small.
Too small, that.
Right.
That's what I was thinking as well.
They think they're not getting enough money, enough food for them.
But if they don't take half of it, I can't really blame you for that.
Right, right.
But you know, if they just want the pizza, they don't want to take the apple.
Or the vegetables and all that stuff.
Lunchroom runs out of food almost never happens.
No, that, that never happens.
What about cookies? Do you have cookies and?
Do, every day we have cookies at the register. Two packs of cookies. Um, brownies, we don't do very often, but cookies are there every day. We have our ice cream there every day. A lot of the suggestions were ice cream sandwiches, which we have been selling every day.
I think you have them, yeah.
Yep. Um, so I think education signage and maybe just a tour, you know. This year, when school started, I went into the auditorium and I talked to each class as they came in. Maybe next year I'll, if it's possible, I don't know if it will be, but give them a quick tour, you know, walk them through, say this is where everything's located. Especially with the deli now and things like that. Even students, returning students in, in the beginning, didn't really understand, well, where do I go to get a panini? Where do I go to get a sandwich? So it might be beneficial next year to do a tour, you know.
How about signage, um, you know, where I'm to kind of make the stations look really more like stations, like a big, you know, panini sign, something.
We, again, the art department.
The art department.
Something. We're relying on them heavily. Um, we were working in the beginning of the year with signage and we used some of it. Some of it, you know, is great. We have it up. Um, you know, the hot meal, the hotline and Chef's Choice and things like that. The ice cream chest, we just got a free wrap from our ice cream company. That's really colorful and it makes it really stand out. We got a poster with everything that we offer that's on the door right above it, uh, things like that. You know, I'm working with our vendors to see what we can get. They usually will come out. They'll do samples too. That's something that I'm in the process of calling around and seeing, you know. If you have any new products that we can sell, please bring them out, set up a table, do some taste testing, things of that nature. I'm looking at trying different burgers, uh, for the middle high school. That's something that we heard quite a bit about. It was a combination of the whole wheat bun, but also the burgers, they're very thin. You know, it's, it's what we're supposed to serve. Um, but there's different brands that you can get. Some are charbroiled. So you know, things like that. I think it would be more of a, I guess, a Burger King burger versus a McDonald's burger.
Tasteier flavor.
Yeah, you get that grillness on it.
Skinny ones.
Is, you were moving on, so I was, or you felt like you were moving on. Is the vending working?
Vending is working.
So that's the next section. Nope, and increase revenue, right?
Right to it. Yep.
Yep, perfect.
So that is focus area number two, uh, increase revenue from other sources. Excuse me. So at the top of the middle high school, we have the coffee shop, which is a wonderful novelty. It increased the satisfaction of the students. It's not making us a lot of money. Um, we just recently opened it after school, starting Monday. And as we previously spoke about, four people the first day. We did a soft opening intentionally. I didn't advertise it like crazy because I want to carry and sell what the students want to buy. I don't want to just fill the shelves and hope that it sells. I think that that may have been an issue in the past. I've been looking around in the storeroom and there's some stuff in there that I'm like, you know, what was this from? Well, it didn't sell. And that's something that, you know, we can lose money really quick doing something like that. And I'd rather keep the money on the plate that's going to get eaten. So you know, that after school does have, it's got some steam. And some of the students, the older, uh, the older boys were saying they want something a little more substantial after school. So we're going to get some more feedback, see what they'd like and go with that. You know, right now we're doing pretzels and nachos, smoothies, parfaits, things like that.
They probably like those grab and go items.
Grab and goes.
Those ones that you sell at lunch.
Yeah, there's no reason we can't do chicken patties and things like that.
Pizza pizza.
Yeah, it's walk in and eat food, you know, it's not a sit down meal type thing. So that'd be perfect for that.
Especially when a lot of, I find that some of the practices start at like three-thirty.
You have some down.
So instead of the kids coming home and the, you know, getting back, they stay in school or they'll walk to Dunkin's and kill the hour. It'd be great if they could grab something.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at.
There's a suggestion for donuts.
Yeah, there's a few.
They, they like.
They sure do.
Great suggestions here, I, you know.
They, um, you know, we're looking at, you know, when, when the sports, the outdoor sports is, is going on, getting more, you know, protein snacks, you know, where you can do like hummus, things like that. Or even cubes of cheese and crackers and things, you know, just something to fill you up really quick. That's not going to like bog you down.
Yeah, even those little, you know, that processed cheese and the little dipper things, those little snacky things you can buy.
Oh, with the little red plastic spatula?
Yeah, probably something like that. Crackers, a little bit of cheese in it. I mean, I wouldn't eat it myself, but you know, kids might.
Yeah, if that's what they want, we'll do it. You know, it's, I'm here, please.
Crackers, that is, supposedly, you know.
So we're, we're looking forward to building that program. I, I think, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of opportunity there with the after school too. The coffee counters and the coffee sales in the morning, the coffee counter at Penbrook is, is slow. There's some teachers that take advantage of it. Good for them. They're getting a great deal. They're getting good coffee. Uh, it's just, it's a hard sell. You know, it's in the kitchen. It's kind of hidden in the back. Um, I don't know what we can do to really drive those sales or if it's ever really going to happen, no matter what we do. The coffee that we're using is good. You know, we had the seniors in for their chorus breakfast and there was great feedback on, you know, the coffee and just the coffee shop at the middle high school in general. So it, it is, it's wonderful to have that and, and I want to start using a lot more. The coffee itself, you know, we're competing with the big boys right next door. So I still see people with their Dunkin' Donuts cups and hey, you know, it's a New England thing, right?
Don't you just want some of that money back?
Right. Yeah, yeah. We, uh, the à la carte items and the vending machine. So vending at the middle high has been a hit right out of the gate. Um, we're bringing in, off the top of my head, I'd say between a hundred and seventy-five and two hundred a week in the vending machine alone, which has zero labor, which is excellent. Penbrook just started seeing some returns on, on that because GAA started using the gym. And that's where it's at. Uh, we're trying to cater, the more snacks that I can find that are more geared towards older people or adults that are going to, you know, use the gym, basketball and the weight room and things like that. So the snacks are starting to get almost like by design, more healthy, you know, um, things like beef jerky that might be in there. You know, people love that stuff and, and.
Beef jerky has tons of protein.
Tons of protein.
Does it?
Tons of protein.
A little bit of salt too, but.
Ninety-seven percent fat free, tons of salt. But if you're sweating a lot, you need that too.
I like beef jerky.
I do too. So with the varsity game, you know, with those games happening, the, do you feel that, um, with the parents, they're going to be, you know, setting up their own concession?
On Friday night, so.
Yeah, on the Friday night game. Do you think that will hinder it at all? Like if you'll see a?
Minimally, I think.
Okay.
We talked about that.
Because I know they have, I mean, it's, I think it's a great idea. We were at Bishop Fenwick the other day and they had a great amount of, of options available. And it's good that the money's going to go back into the basketball program. So you don't think it'll be?
Well, they're only going to do it on Friday night.
Be on Friday, right.
That was kind of the compromise.
I think there was an email already out about that.
Yes, yes.
Asking for donations, stock ops, so that the money would go directly back to the program.
And the kids appreciate it too. I mean, everyone would rather have something there to snack on and eat. Pizza, you know, if they're, if they haven't had dinner, for the kids.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to see a hit. I think the vending machines will still do fine, you know. Um, and again, we're waiting to really see, because GAA just started using Penbrook. So I, I would imagine it'll be roughly around the same, a little bit less.
In the high school, do the vending machines have more than drinks?
We have a vending machine. There's three that are available. There's a snack exclusive, non-refrigerated. So it's bagged items. And like bars, like cereal bars and nutrigen bars and things like that. And then we have the water machine, which is a polar machine. We have the switch in there as well as carbonated, non-carbonated polar items. And then sports, the, has the powerade, I believe, powerade machine, which is right next to the snack machine. Yeah, athletic department, yeah. Yeah. So the, uh, next would be the catering that we're looking into.
That looked good, that menu, I thought.
Good, good. Yeah, you know, it's, it's, it's a jumping off point that we can do whatever. We really can. And for something like catering, I spoke with Thurston, our mainline supplier for, for our vendor. And we can, I have a whole separate order guide for catering where I can get anything from, you know, prime rib to U-ten shrimp to if we, if, you know, cause of rise, you know, we could get whatever we need. Um, so it's not just your chicken piccata and your spaghetti and meatballs. We can do, you know, beef, turkey, yep. So it's so far this year, we've done approximately four hundred dollars year to date in catering, which is a little, I mean, I, I think it's average. I think we're in a good place. With that going out, when the big release happens, I'm hoping it's going to drum up a little bit more catering, even if it's not the higher end things. Now people have an idea with a price and they can put something together in their heads and they can contact me. Um, then we can go from there. So I have, I have some faith that that's going to drum up some business as well as far as catering goes.
Good.
And how is it going to go out?
Pardon?
How is it going to go out?
We'll go electronically, but as far as department heads, I'm probably going to stuff some mailboxes with some, some old school paper. Yeah.
But it'll be something about this will be on the website, easily accessible for parents who are arranging sports banquets and.
Right. And Guy Prescott, I'm working with him on getting the contacts for, you know, the, the people that are in the sports, you know.
And once the Facebook page is up and running, you'll have on there. Yeah, I thought, I thought it looked really good.
Maybe make brochures too, a little brochure, maybe the art department.
Right, exactly.
Make some brochures to pass out.
Yeah, so hopefully word of mouth gets around and, you know, we'll do a couple and then it'll take off.
Awesome.
And the focus area number three in the action plan would be the customer satisfaction, which is the survey that, that we have here. I think the last part of the survey we have to go over is the bottom half, which is the, the percentages, which came out pretty good. And we're, uh, we're happy with them. The food is served fresh, forty-seven percent agree. Food looks appealing, thirty-eight percent. You know, those are the higher numbers. Uh, food tastes good, almost fifty percent, forty-nine percent said the food tastes good. And there was a tie for strongly agree and agree for the temperature of the food, which shouldn't be an issue because it, it is definitely hot. The healthy meal options, which we don't have a choice in really, uh, is agree. So that, that's good. And there's enough variety, forty-three percent. And I'm glad, I figured that would be a little bit higher due to the fact, you know, with the, the deli and the coffee shop now. We'll see. We'll see on the next survey, when we take the next survey, if it goes up. I would imagine it would. And, uh, you know, it's a split between agree and disagree that the amount of food that is distributed is enough.
Yeah, that's always a pretty.
And that's the one that I, that I asked before, did I, I mean, forty-one percent agree or stronger? To, I mean, fourteen percent has no opinion, which.
Right.
You wonder what that even means, but, um, it's essentially fifty-fifty on there's enough food or not.
Right.
Which, to your point before about the value and.
Yeah. One thing that we're looking at, we're using square rectangular, rectangular trays, um, probably about the size of a piece of paper, a little smaller. And on the next order, we're, we are ordering, uh, round plates, just to see visually, it is going to look more like a meal on a round plate. It's not going to look like, here's a tray, very institutionalized, uh, which we want to get away from. So that we're going to, we're going to try that. I would imagine we're going to have positive results from it, so.
That would be great. Cause actually the food looks appealing. I mean, it is a, you know, like around forty-five percent, a little bit less than forty-five percent disagree. So anything you can do to make it look, I mean, I don't.
We were talking about just, you know, like a garnish on it, you know, just a little something.
Sprinkle at the end.
A little parsley.
Colors.
Absolutely.
But maybe the round plate and maybe, you know, what you were talking about could help too.
There's very few foods that lend themselves well to a portioned out tray, you know, it automatically looks like a TV dinner. And if you don't cut things square, then they don't fit. So I, I, I agree. I think it's the way to go. So that's something we're going to try, I'd say, within the next three weeks. You know, we have to burn out our supplies.
Getting the trays, you know, we have some of the plastic trays, you know.
Yeah.
So the hard part is, we were talking about you, the, the amount of cleanup that you need in between each lunch, right?
So you know, you.
Trays cleaned.
Yeah, that's the hard part.
Yeah. Yeah, because we don't have a dedicated dishwashing, you know, person. So it's now everything that's recyclable is great and alleviates that, that position need altogether. But if we start doing trays and things like that, now you're going to need somebody to just run them constantly during the lunches for, for two hours.
Yeah. How much are those little trays?
We got, uh, off the top of my head, I, I, we got a thousand in a case. I want to say a case is thirty-six dollars. They're, they're very, very little. They're cellulose. They're, they float. They're so light, you know, so. And the plates are going to be the same. So the, the round plates shouldn't be much more money, if any.
One of the things you were talking about doing Sean too, was having, I don't know what you were calling it, but it was like a, we were talking about, is it standing or is it, is it a standing committee or is it?
Well, the food committee.
Yeah, the foods committee. And I don't know what we sort of decided on that, because.
After break, I'm going to get that running when we come back.
Yeah, so we're talking about, you know, would we want to have kids, you know, submit their names to say, I would be happy to have lunch, you know, someday and the lunch is on the food service department. You know, and just get a, a bunch of different kinds of kids. Or do you get a steady group of kids who want to be the foods committee? You know, who, you know, who meet on a regular basis with you and they're the sort of ones that.
More representatives for each class or something like that.
Do you have a thought on that, Chloe?
I think you'll get some people who would want to do that.
Yeah.
I mean, it's free lunch and I think people would be interested in that. Getting to try out like a lot of different food. I think it piques some interest in.
And you might. So you think the same people or to change it up and have?
I have the same people, just to like, I don't know, they can tell you like what changes, what they liked.
Right, and they can go out and get feedback from their kid, from their, their friends or their, or their class.
It might depend on the numbers that you get too, you know, I mean, if you get fifty kids, you might want to give everybody a turn and say, you know, well, you're not going to get fifty kids.
You're going to probably, you know.
Two or three or four.
Right.
Well, if you only get a small number, then you might want to be able to just keep those kids.
Right.
You know, because that saves time too, like the lunch is. Because if somebody wants to do it, you'd like to give them a turn.
Yeah, you wouldn't meet all the time, probably meet.
Typically, when I've done food committees in higher education and things, it's, it's a group that, that's what they do. And it's always the same people and they're representatives and they gather information, spread the word. They help with marketing. So the food committee is more than just what did you think of the macaroni and cheese? Yeah, it's, yeah, it works. Yeah, it's a working relationship.
You want their ideas, you want their thoughts.
Right.
Yeah, well, that sounds great. Well, we're very happy with the increases.
Yeah, we're very happy with them too.
And, and really the high school, it looked, it looked really good today. I like the, um, I like having the sample dish there, you know.
The show plate, you know, it's, it cut down the lines significantly too. The lines go quicker. They know exactly what it is. Yeah.
I want that or I don't.
We have the, the board, the chalkboard that says what it is, where the line goes, that, what it looks like once you get there. So yeah, those help a lot. And we're doing that at both schools.
Yeah. Well, that's good.
Yeah, very pleased.
Working very hard, which is, which is always nice to see and everybody looks happy.
Both teams work very, very hard. They do.
Good.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for putting all this stuff together and how you. Yeah, it's a lot. Segue into the different ones.
Again, I think in April.
Okay.
Samples.
With samples for sure. You guys come in for lunch whenever you want.
Heather used to bring us samples.
The whoopee pies, yeah.
Pumpkin whoopee pies today. Thank you again.
Thank you folks.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Sean. Got some good stuff going on there.
Yes, indeed.
Oh, superintendent's goals. So do you want to just get an update, update on the search for the secretary first?
Sure. Yeah, so we did have quite a bit of interest actually, um, in this position.
Yeah, I think I put in there sixty. Yeah, I think I put in there 63.
Resumes? 63 resumes. I wouldn't say all of them sort of met our criteria, but, you know, a lot of interest in it. So I asked anybody at the central office that wanted to participate in the interviews because obviously, you know, it's a very important position and we all work as a team. And so Julie, Suzanne and Tricia kind of have been the sort of steady, steady group that's been working with me on this. So we've done two, two batches of interviews, four or five people each time. And we actually just looked at, tomorrow, the position closes tomorrow. So we actually just looked at a couple more and I think Monday we've got three more people. And then the goal would be to, and we've been sort of talking as we've been going along, like sort of, you know, who's on our list and it's been interesting that all of us have had the same people on the list, so that's been really good. And then the goal would be to narrow it down to three or four people and then have Barbie, because you guys are, it's obviously a shared committee, a shared position, so Barbie would come in and be able to, you know, interview with, with me for the final interviews. And then what we'll do is we'll just check references and select somebody. You know, the goal was originally right after the holidays, you know, maybe like January 2nd, somebody'd be, you know, ready to go. But we're not sure because if, depending on who we hire, if they have to give a notice, we would want, we would expect somebody to give us a fair notice, so we certainly would not expect anyone else to do it any less. So, you know, you know, I'm thinking Martin Luther King, you know, the Tuesday after Martin Luther King is kind of more realistic, but if they could start sooner, then, you know...
That's very nice of Maureen to be able to help do that.
Maureen's been doing an excellent job.
And Joanne, I know, was...
Joanne really stepped up, yeah. But having Maureen there at the desk has made a big difference and, and, you know, she's very tenacious, you know. She does not give up. She's done some things already, organizing things. We have, you know, she's... I tried to set this up for you. You know, she's, you know, she's really, like, the posting procedure, I mean, that, that's more complicated than you think, but she did not give up on it. And she's very proud that all the meetings we've got scheduled, we had agendas posted for recently. So, yeah, so I think we're looking, we're looking forward, we were very optimistic. We did, you know, meet a lot of nice people. So I think we're gonna find somebody really good. And then, of course, it's a learning curve for anybody. We did not get as many school people as we thought we would. But we did get a number of people who are like guidance secretaries right now or a school secretary. So they see this as being kind of the next step for them, you know, as in a more, you know, central office kind of position. So, you know, there, there are some people in the mix for that, that are still, that have that kind of experience, really like that.
Is the extra, something that I've never quite understood, the extra stipend, for lack of a better word?
Yeah.
Is that for time spent coming to these meetings? I assume that's part, what, what is that?
What does it do?
What is that compensating for? Is it?
Well, I think it's, well, we, we don't do it, you know, down to the like, some places will say, you know, X amount of dollars for, for, per meeting, right? And then you do the minutes. And so kind of the way we, with the bucket we put it in and we've been talking to people is that you work, you're the school committee secretary. So you, you attend school committee meetings, you do the minutes, you help organize the subcommittee meetings, help the school committees manage their calendar, yeah, calendar. If, if the chair has questions or would like the secretary to hold the committee on something or organize something for the committee, setting up registrations to go to conferences, that kind of stuff. You know, those things all fall into that.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't separate that and have that, like, a separate position for someone else that would just do this at night?
You could.
You could, you could.
I wonder if you get more people, a broader interest in the position to just be doing that during the day?
Well, in the 11 years that I've been here, I've seen it done all, all of those ways. So when I first came here, the superintendent's secretary did it. And then, and then at some point, there was a separate secretary because there was some tension, yeah, yeah. So, so there was a separate secretary. Then when I first came, there was still a separate secretary for a little bit of time. And then the committee and I at the time said, well, it's easier if we all just have one person do it. And Laura had the skills to do it because she had been superintendent's secretary in a previous district. So that's why we put the two things together. We've not ever felt it's a conflict, maybe you have felt it's a conflict, but that's why we did it. We just figured it would, it gave Laura a little bit more money, right? And because we're all so connected in terms of the work we do, you know, it was just easier to do it that way. But I, I'm certainly open to, you know, whatever the, whatever the group would like.
A different, you know, pool of people that would just want the position during the day and then get someone else at night.
Somebody who might just wanna do part, you know, they'd have to wanna do part-time work, right? So just...
It's a pretty nominal.
Yeah, it would be a pretty nominal.
And then to get somebody just to come out at night too, I think is...
What did you say?
To get somebody to come out at night, you know, and their part-time job to be, you know, two nights a...
Yeah, we...
I don't know, to me it's also related, you know.
Yeah, exactly.
I think it works well the way...
Hourly?
Everybody who's, we've talked to, 'cause we make it very clear, you know, right? You know, we've said, you know, is, is coming to a couple of meetings a month a problem for you, you know, would that be an issue and...
Do they know it's four hours?
It's not always four hours. Yeah, so, but, you know, I'm certainly up to having a conversation with the, with the committee on it. But that's what we've been telling people, is that, you know, you'd be responsible for that as well.
Okay.
So that's the update on that.
Good.
Thank you. Nearing the end of the search, I think.
So now we have superintendent's goals.
What?
So we're, we were a little late getting out of the gate on this, so...
Cheryl, I, I thought...
What did you think?
I thought that we were still gonna hold off on it because the first goal, I thought we were taking off. I don't know why, but I was under the impression that we weren't going with the first goal. Because it's more, it's not a goal, it's more of a necessity. It's, it's happening anyhow, so it didn't seem to me... I thought Cheryl and I both agreed that this really wasn't a goal.
No, I, I don't think we did agree on that. I think what happened was you had questioned whether it was a professional practice goal. But we didn't talk about taking it off. We just didn't finish the conversation on it, I think, is what you're saying. I think Suzanne and Cheryl had gathered some information from all of you. And I actually had already made some list of things that I knew, I had heard you say at the end of the, when we did the evaluation last year, and all the things that I knew we were gonna do anyway. So it was interesting when we compared the, the list, Suzanne had sent me a list at, you know, from you and I said, oh, well, that's perfect because most of these things are things that we already had been doing. They were a part of the strategic plan or they were part of school improvement plans, especially the ones that are the district goals. So, so anyway, because we were late getting out of the gate when we met, you know, I had already started to populate the December category. Suzanne had sent me a note recently saying that she wanted to continue to talk about it, which I am fine to do. But that my worry or concern was that if we didn't start talking about this now, the next report would be in January and then you literally, it would be halfway through the year at that point. So I thought it would be better to just start with this. And then if we wanna change the goals, I don't have a problem with it, but we, I felt like we needed to put it in the packet anyway, just as a point of conversation. I thought I had said that to you, Suzanne, in the email that we've talked about. So, but it's, it's totally up to you. We can delay it. It's just, it just felt like if we push it off too much longer, it's just gonna, we're gonna just do a, one report, you know?
Well, with, with that being said, and I don't know what happened during the meeting, but that, like Suzanne had said, that already is gonna happen, like it, it can't not happen. The same with the, the accreditation though, but I see where that would be under district improvement.
Number five.
Right, but those are, those really are district goals. That is unique to this year, right?
But, but it's, it's gonna happen anyhow. To me, it just doesn't seem like it's...
Well, all of these things are gonna happen.
Well, well...
Right?
But in, in different...
The budget will get developed and...
Right, but in different terms. I mean, the whole writing piece, you know, I get that because it's going to make the district better. You know, having the children, you know, work on their writing pieces. What goal was that?
Oh, that was, um, student, uh, is it student learning?
Student learning, right. You know, and I think that's a great goal because here you have performance of 30% of students in the high needs group, they'll get an average score of two on the, so, you know, there's, you know, it's a great goal to work towards, to make the district better.
Yeah, absolutely.
Hiring a principal, I personally think it's a necessity. It's not really, it's just part of the job that you have to do. And it also, to me, seems to be the same thing for goal five, for the accreditation. I mean, that has to happen, you know? So for me, it seems like it's a necessity rather than a goal. They're coming anyhow.
But I think what I was looking at it is, it's, I am a big part of the process. So the, it's, the goal was the, the process, not just the end product. Yeah, so that's why I was looking at these from the perspective of their, their, yes, they're, all of these things have to happen. But if we, but there is a role to be played in getting that accreditation.
Right, but I'm, I'm looking at things like...
And I don't have a problem having less goals, by the way.
No, but I'm looking also, you know, we talked about the diversity, you know, somehow incorporating diversity, I think, into the curriculum, more of embedding it, rather than just having these meetings with committee to... What goal is that now?
Seven? Are you talking about the...
Your acceptance and diversity is seven.
Yes. So you're implementing strategies, but I, I, I don't know, I think I'd like to see it more embedded into the curriculum more than... I mean, what do you mean by implement strategies? So...
I'm sorry, Suzanne, where are you?
Goal seven, page 15.
Oh, goal seven. So now, what do you, I wanna just make sure.
Where are you saying, where do you say?
So right on the top, it says, we'll implement strategies to increase awareness and acceptance of diversity. As opposed to actually, like, embedding it in the curriculum and sort of teaching it.
Well, that would be an action step more than a goal, unless you want it to be just a, a goal. What, what I'm doing is I'm taking advantage of what the schools are doing. 'Cause I'm not gonna do something myself that, that's separate from what the schools are doing. Schools have an agenda, we've been talking about, related to acceptance and diversity. And certainly embedding it in the curriculum is a part of it, but it's also building the school culture, right? Making sure that you, you have groups working on it, making sure that you give, you know, we're bringing in trainers to come in and work on embedding it. I mean, those are things we're doing to achieve this goal of increasing the awareness, building a positive school culture.
So the implement strategies is actually, you know...
Whatever the strategies we, we are agreeing to, which is the, the ideas that we're putting down here that we're gonna do. I, I think what you, are you asking about the outcome? Is that what you're asking me about?
I guess my interpretation, it sounds like it's, it's process versus outcome. You're very involved in the process. The goal isn't, and you do say, remove us from morning, I forget the exact order. Implementing strategies, increasing awareness, I get, you're saying that it is more, it's more process than it is by X date, and I don't know what the measurement would be off the top of my head.
Well, I think that's the problem is...
By X date, we will accomplish Y.
Right.
Just my interpretation of your thoughts.
I'm following that same, what you're saying. So we can certainly discuss, you know, outcomes in more detail, as Suzanne is saying. I don't, you know, I don't have a problem with that. It's just, it's hard to determine what the out, what, what is the number? Like what, you know, not everything is measurable.
Right.
Well, and maybe, maybe it's not measurable in a percentage or a number of meetings or a number of whatever, it's... Something has been implemented rather than, to your point, we had a bunch of meetings about it. You can have a bunch of meetings and everything can happen.
And where's it gonna go with these meetings, you know?
Culture, we wanna look at, you know, how, what are the, the new features of the culture going to be?
Well, I'm, I'm sure the schools are measuring, are measuring that in, in a number of ways. You know, so they're bringing in, let's say, specific speakers or programs.
Just having regular speakers, regular programs that coordinate with the curriculum. I mean, embedding, you know, increased awareness and acceptance of diversity in the curriculum is a strategy.
Yes, it is.
I mean, I think it's a really, really important strategy, but that's, in, in a sense, what it is.
Yeah, we have the acceptance committee that meets, I think, every month, and I'm a part of that. And I think, I think we're trying to get a speaker. I know we had the play last year, so I think we're trying to get a speaker this year.
And where do you get funding for that, do you know?
I'm not sure.
Does Mr. Lucia have his?
It depends, different ways. PTA has helped us. In fact, I was just talking to Erin today, Erin Duggan, because one of the things that PTA is interested in doing is, is helping to support bringing Chris Heron back again. But she's also was interested in this particular program. I don't, she's gonna get me the flyer on it, but it sounds like exactly the kind of thing that you're talking about, you know?
And I think we might get, like, different people, maybe, I don't know, people with a disability or just different speakers to talk about certain things. So it might just be, it might be different, a lot of different speakers that we might have. And I think we're also maybe gonna do a video of all the students, maybe talking about a little story about like, I don't know, about something that they have anxiety or stress or depression and some kind of like creative video, see that it's like throughout the whole school. And obviously, it's a, you know, it could be anonymous, but if you wanna put your name out there, just to show that we do have a lot of diversity in the school and to show that people may be struggling with the same thing that you're struggling with or dealing with or, yeah.
Right. One of the things we are talking about doing is a school climate survey that we could, you know, track results on as, you know, as a, as a goal too, right? So we're doing all these things, but, you know, how are people, you know, feeling about the environment?
That's, that's a great, great idea. It's important to have data and really understand, you know, where you're at before you effectively implement strategies.
These call, this calls for a vote, do you, as a committee, you and Cheryl, with Cheryl not being here, it's hard, but... Do you wanna go back and talk about it instead of voting tonight?
I would like to.
Okay, do you guys already have a meeting scheduled?
Uh, yeah, is it, uh...
Did we talk about January 9th? Okay, so that, that would probably be before the, the next school committee meeting.
I know we have public relations scheduled, I think, I wanna say January 9th. But we could certainly make this change.
Yeah, why don't, yeah, rather than...
January 9th.
Rather than vote on it, but do, do people have questions about this? What is, other than what we talked about?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I would, the, and I go to the Spark Gold thing, which I know is a, is a, the measurability of it. I get that, I think to your point, I get that hiring a new principal is the measurement, you did it or not. But it's...
And, and people felt that they were, they were part of the process. I mean, there's, there's a, there's a lot of things you can do to measure whether or not it was a successful process.
For sure. Quant, yeah, the, the measurability is tricky, I, I think is, is...
So, yeah, I mean, we're happy to keep working on it. I just wanted to give you something to respond to and that's why, you know, all of these things that, you know, are in the December are things we've already done, you know? Just so that was really just a, you know, ideally, the process would be, we'd agree on what all the goals are, right? And then I would report to you, but I, I, I just felt like if we were gonna, you know, bring it to you, that I was gonna tell you exactly what is we've already done. So I was trying to kind of do two things at once, just to kind of move the process forward. We can certainly, you know, go back and take a look at it again and come back at the next meeting and put it on for another discussion.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you for putting that together.
You're welcome.
Okay, so in terms of just talking about, I don't know, I'm going to go into business right now. Where am I?
Thank you, Chloe.
I'm losing myself here. Subcommittee reports. Does anyone have anything that they wanna talk about? I know there was a safety meeting today. We've had governance and...
Sure, we did have a safety meeting this morning. And Margaret reported that Amanda Harding has created a flyer for substitutes with times and safety information about allergies and the safety manual and fire drills, protocol and... And Margaret really likes the idea, so she's gonna create one very similar for the Penbrook. So we're taking a best practice kind of that Amanda has come up with and expanding on it.
What did our substitutes get before this?
Nothing, nothing really in writing, you know, they would, when they... Nothing, nothing really in writing, you know, they would, when they come into the school, you know, the, the school might give them information, but they didn't really have much, so that was why they, that was the, so they filled in this gap, and basically said, just make sure you know this, make sure you know this, make sure you know this, you know?
Right, and if we have long-term subs or, or, they go to the Alice training, or they, if they understand more.
We offer the subs the Alice training.
Right, um, let's see, so the Penbrook did the Alice training, um, for the lower grades. The fifth and the sixth grades will be practicing the barricading process soon. Newburyport is starting to do Alice, we're way ahead of them. And they would like us to share our approach with the younger grades, which everyone on the committee agreed was, perfectly, was a great idea. See, we did a preliminary Alice drill in the middle high school, but soon we're gonna do another one, it's gonna be a higher level, full training, to simulate a perpetrator like anywhere in high school.
They offered that I could be the perpetrator.
I said, Henry's such a good bad guy, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna take that, although he did say I could go with him. I said, oh, we'll be like double, double.
Well, you have some amazing Halloween costumes. You might be able to, to get there. And you also talked about with Margaret, maybe having coffees in January to invite parents that have any concerns about Alice or bullying or whatever's on their mind.
Doing some coffees with Carol.
Yes.
On, on, one of the topics could just be a conversation around questions about bullying and.
She's doing the middle school office to pump up the coffee sales.
Yeah.
Or use, or use the catering, use the catering.
Have your little circle right next to the coffee.
That's right, okay. That's Sean, cater it for her. Um, now Chief Cudmore also asked us to discuss, there's a trespassing issue at the middle high school. Apparently, we have, there's a, the, the Grange, it's now called the Grange, but it used to be, I think, more people might know it as the old Penntucket Workshop. Beautiful old historic building is now a private residence, and, uh, apparently, he has emailed the high school because a lot of, uh, students are trespassing, at the end of the day, they're getting picked up around the library. And I think in the past, I mean, in their, you know, defense, historically, it's just, it's been a common practice, so they, that, they have that, but the current, um, owner does not appreciate it at all, and neither do his neighbors, and so now we're having quite a, um, you know, we're having to look at it and see what we can do about it, the police. Scott Hatch, Detective Hatch, is he a detective, yeah, lieutenant, I'm sorry, yeah, lieutenant. Uh, he was there yesterday, and he saw about twenty-five kids coming through there.
But the day Peter went out there with Henry, uh, there was a hundred kids, so.
Yeah, well, I went, so I went by there today.
Send something out to the parents?
Yes, he's gonna send, he's gonna send a letter out to the parents, he's gonna talk about it on the morning announcements. I mean, because trespassing is an arrestable offense, and I assume after, it would be after warnings, it would be after, you know, discussions, it wouldn't be like.
He's not gonna go after a hundred kids.
But, you know, bottom line is, if, if, you know, students are warned not to do it and they persist, um.
No, but I think the, the, the person has a valid point, that if there is an injury of any kind on his property, then that's, that's a liability. So it's not that he's just being difficult, I mean, he has to look out for himself.
It's his private property, so you see the signs, no trespassing, that's.
And he does have them clearly on the property.
I mean, I, I did go behind, I did go out there and I took some pictures, and from what I could see, there's about four different egresses, places where kids could move through. One of those looks like it, I'm not really sure what's happening with it, because it's a plowed path, and there's no, you know, gates or anything, or no signs, although we've been told that there, there were signs up that they were taken down. It almost looks like they're, they're inviting students, I mean, just because there's nothing to tell students to stay out in this one place that I saw, so.
Like it's a pathway through the person's property?
Yes, yes, from the, the pathway that goes along the baseball field, and, and it's like, it's plowed. Why would it be plowed? I'm not really sure, so.
Okay, well hopefully between the police and between Prince Belusha.
I talked to Mike today about it, so.
Yeah, they can get it figured out.
And we, we did talk about, so what do we want parents to do, where do we want students to be picked up from? And there are two places, basically, there's the Pearly Lot, and then there's also Maple Street.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's an issue with them picking them up at the library though, it's just they have to walk past the Verizon Building and on the crosswalk over.
Right, exactly, right, without trespassing on anyone's private property.
Right, yes, okay.
Um, so that was, and, um, Penbrook had a fire drill last week, is that right?
We had fire drills, yeah, recently.
Okay, and, uh, everything was good, it all worked out well. And that's it, okay, thank you.
If I could, I know I mentioned it at some point, if Officer, and, and the answer could absolutely be no, if Officer Henry could be directing traffic at East Main five minutes earlier, I think would be huge.
Okay, so, in morning and afternoon?
More so in the afternoon, um, cause he gets there at, I'm, I'm pulling out by two forty-five, and it's already pretty hardly backed up, and he tends to be.
Two thirty-five, he'd need to get there?
The, no, even like two forty, he gets there at two forty-five, so I'm often trying to get out if he's pulling up, and it takes him a couple minutes to kinda get ready and.
Okay, so two forty?
It's kinda messy.
Okay, I can leave a message, email him on that. Give it my best shot. Okay.
Okay, um, governance, we did meet, um, we have some things in the packet for you this evening that we're gonna look over, and hopefully you'll, you'll approve, and we did look over a couple of other, uh, policies that, um, we will have ready for the next meeting.
Yeah.
You didn't bring that one tonight, did you?
I did, right there.
Oh, you, oh.
Isn't that the one?
This is Mike's?
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect, okay, we'll pass this up, we'll talk about that during your business. And budget and finance, do you wanna talk about?
Uh, we met.
Last week.
It was last week.
Yeah.
Um, more sort of preliminary budget planning, um, starting to, starting to start to get specific. Um, but just kinda playing out scenarios with what next year's gonna look like. Not, not too much hard details, just more of a process meeting.
Yeah, and then we have another meeting in January.
The first week in January, and the FinCom rep will be there.
Which is great, yeah, that's good.
Meeting next week too.
I, just kidding, we are meeting next week, and it is at, at meeting that he will be. On the nineteenth.
Yeah.
Whenever our next meeting is, he will be there.
Oh, on Tuesday?
At eleven.
Oh, yes, I do have that, okay. It's gonna be a busy time of year, so negotiations too, you guys started?
We had our first meeting with the teachers a few days ago, and it started well.
Yeah, good.
And we are meeting with the, um, food service, uh, folks tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, that's gonna be a busy time too. Uh, CPAC, they had a recent meeting, the speaker, right?
They did, they also had a holiday, um, get, gathering.
Oh, they did, they did that, oh, nice.
Yeah, I, I wasn't there, I was at the basketball game, so I'd like to have been there.
What else, when's their next meeting? Their next meeting is January tenth, uh, six forty-five to eight o'clock. Dr. Melissa Orkin, uh, it's part of their, their, um, series for struggling readers. It's Effective Solutions for Motivating Struggling Readers.
Sorry, Pam, what is that?
Interesting. January tenth, six forty-five to eight PM at the Georgetown Public Library. Dr. Melissa Orkin, Effective Strategies for Motivating Struggling Readers.
There you go.
Yeah, it was pretty, the first one was pretty good. Very interesting.
Yeah, it's very interesting. Okay, that's good. Um, so. You do have it in?
Good, yeah, that'll be good.
Okay, so the policy that we want to hopefully get approval on tonight is the, uh, field trip policy. I J O A A dash R dash one, so that's on there for you. We did, um, make some, we, we did add in, uh, J, transportation of students in private cars. We took a look at some other districts, um, writing on that policy, and we found one out of, uh, but there weren't many, actually.
No.
But we did find one out of Hudson, New Hampshire, that we thought, uh, pretty much said what we needed to say if it came down to, um, kids driving, students driving in the private cars. So other than that, I don't. So that would be like a day trip?
Right.
We're talking about.
The child, the student going home with a parent who might have been a chaperone?
Yeah, that, it was more like the, um, when Ms. Donovan came to talk about the student she was bringing up to Plymouth State, and they were going in private cars, it was like six or eight students, and they were gonna be traveling, so I think it would be more so that.
The old days when parents were the chaperones.
Yes, yes.
And then like for athletic. We didn't wanna encourage it, but if it were to happen.
Yes.
But like athletic events.
She's not gonna take a bus, but, I mean, that, six kids.
Yeah, I don't know, do, at field trips, do they allow kids to go home? I mean, I know at Kiev they do, so this would definitely be, but if somebody went to like, I know Plymouth Plantation, everyone goes on the buses.
But let's, you know, and let's just say a parent was a chaperone, would the child be able to go home with that parent?
Well, usually they have a separate, um, form, allowing that.
Just like the athletic one, just like the athletic one.
If you wanted to bring Michael's daughter and Barbie's daughter and Pam's son home with you, that.
Yes, that would fall into here.
Yes.
Right, but then, it would, it wouldn't be like it could be told that day, because if you looked at this, you have to have, if, if this is something that is going to happen, you have to provide a license, you have to provide proof of, um, insurance, you have to have a particular amount of liability on your, um, car, things like that.
Right, yeah.
Is that, I guess the, the only thing that I didn't know, is that a hundred and three hundred thousand, a hundred per vent, I assume, is that a typical amount?
That is, that is, because that's, yes, and we were talking about that too.
People typically.
Well, yeah, but that's the minimum that.
Okay, I would just be curious how that relates to, I mean, I, to be honest, I don't know what we have.
Yeah, Hamilton Wyndham had that, and this came from the Hudson, New Hampshire one, and that's New Hampshire, so I was like, okay, if New Hampshire and then Mass has it, you know, the two different districts. And I would assume that this would then be handled through the new, your new secretary.
Right.
That would all go through, like verification of the.
Well, or the school, this.
Or would it be like Diane if it was Penbrook?
I mean, that could be.
The parent would have to be Corey, does well, I'm assuming.
Well, yeah, but.
Well, they wouldn't be able to chaperone anyway, if they didn't have that, but, but I think you're right in terms of, um, like, so normally, like, when they do a field trip form now, secretaries probably collect, the teachers collect the field trip forms, right? And I'm sure that if a parent were going to, to do it, they would have to vet that and make sure that they had the appropriate documentation. I don't think I'd have to do it, I think that if this is clear in the policy, what, you know, has to be, you know, provided.
Right, um.
So can you go back to your question of, of if Suzanne was driving our various kids home from Kiev, would that, would that be J? Cause that's not really a school sanctioned.
Kiev, it is.
No, but, but if you're leaving, the school, the school provides the bus.
Yes.
If you decide to pick up your child, or we get together and you pick up our four kids, that's not a school sanctioned departure. I would think that if you're driving those four kids home, you're taking that responsibility on yourself, because you are not taking the transportation that the district is providing. If you leave a day early, if you wanna stop somewhere on the way home, whatever that is, you're removing yourself from the event.
School sanctioned event.
For her kid, then, but the question I think they were asking is, right, so what would, so like if, if, ahead of time, um, you know, you call and say, I, I'm, I want my child, I'm not going up to Kiev, but I want my child to go home with Suzanne McDonald, I want them to ride the bus, right?
No, right, right in the car.
Figure out, like, okay, so you, you're gonna need to sign a release that if something happens.
They would need to do anyway, to let Suzanne pick up my child, like.
And they have that for the athletics, so you have to, you know, sign a waiver, whatever that is. You know, saying you're taking your child home, and if you're taking another child home, they have to have that slip as well.
I think this, this, the language of this is saying is like if, like, I think Barbie's exactly right, with, like, in the case of the van trip. Or, you know, in the old days, we didn't take buses, you know, you, you had seven parents, you, and you know, I took five, you took four, whatever. Um, it's that, where the school is basically saying, we are allowing, you know, we are, the transportation isn't gonna be through the bus, it's gonna be through private cars. Then this would, if you, in other words, you can't drive those kids unless you have, you follow this policy.
Like the school isn't contracting out to our bus company for this particular event, it's gonna be strictly.
That's what I think is J.
Yeah, I guess it's just, it doesn't. I guess it doesn't, I don't feel like it says that in the policy, is my, which I didn't, which I didn't think about when I read it. Any use of private vehicles for transportation of students to or from school on field trips, et cetera, et cetera, must have higher authorization.
By the superintendent, does he need, right? Now. Those providing unauthorized insurance, so at your own expense and liability.
But is, if, so, okay, so then, so then my question does hold, if Suzanne wants to drive her, her child home.
Yeah.
She needs to ask the principal essentially for permission.
Right.
But if you're driving your own child home, that's on your own.
Yes.
The school's not assuming any liability, but you're, you're giving authorization.
I think you still have to let them know.
This is strictly if we're not contracting out for that field trip for a bus.
Okay, but I agree, it just doesn't say.
He's just saying it doesn't say that, okay.
So you wanna put it in the language is what you're saying.
Suzanne gets, gets Peter to say yes, she is now covered by the school driving her kid or whoever else in the car home, which I don't think should be the case, which I don't think can be the case.
So do you just want added in there if the school is not contracting a transportation company?
Any use of private schools, private vehicles for transportation of students who are from, when the school is otherwise providing.
Is it otherwise?
Otherwise providing.
Yes, is, yes, yes.
When the school isn't.
Otherwise providing transportation.
Yeah.
From a contracted service. Okay, did you take a look at the, um, the rest of the, uh, field trip policy? We did make the, we had made quite a few changes in there. Does anybody have any questions on it, or concerns about wording?
I like, I know this was a heavy lift.
It's a lot of work, yeah. So then I would assume, once this goes in, like Margaret and Peter will now talk about this policy.
That's right.
Because we also have a new, um, the superintendent updated the form, this, so as you can see, it looks different from what the, um, teachers normally give us, there's a couple of revisions in there.
Oh, right.
Yep, right, and that, it provides a school committee a checklist, which will make the determination as to whether it's, um, approved or not. And then also the disclosure by the, uh, appointed public employee, which I think too is very important for that to be filled out.
Is, does this hap, when does this happen? Does this happen before the trip is approved?
Well, I would assume, I would think it's once Peter au- authorizes it, and then it comes to us.
Right, before, okay, that, that was really my question, yeah.
Because it wouldn't come to us if.
As part of the process, cause they sent it to my, they sent it to my, so I, I would, so I would think it's after the trip would be approved.
By?
By you.
Which one are we talking about?
She's, she's talking about the disclosure.
But if you were to determine that it was not of public benefit.
Well, then I probably wouldn't bring, if I asked for my signature to come to you, I probably wouldn't sign the field trip form.
I thought it only had to have the principals.
It's the appointing, you're the appointing authority. It's the appointing, you're the appointing authority, right?
Yes, usually that's how we, that's how we, we've always assumed it was, send it to the superintendent's office. When we've done it before.
After the principal.
Yeah, so, so let's just walk the process through, right? So I decide I want, teacher decides they wanna take the kids to France for a week, right? Fills out the field trip form with all the information and then signs it, gives it to the principal. Principal looks at it and says, yeah, you know, this sounds like the kind of trip, it doesn't, you know, school time, whatever, but then signs it. Then it gets sent to me. So if I, if I read it and say, I don't think that this is a trip that's educationally set, you have a major case to me, then I wouldn't sign this. And it wouldn't come to you.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But if I sign it, then, then that's tantamount to me saying that I am going to approve the trip, which means the teachers, as they present in here, are gonna be eligible to get a free trip.
Okay, okay.
Do you know what I mean? Cause, cause this paperwork here, the financial information indicates that they're not paying for the trip.
Right, right.
Right? So then my expectation would be that when you go through this and go through your little checklist and say, okay, you know, this tip, trip is gonna happen. The teacher would get notified and then the teacher would have to fill out this disclosure form.
Yeah, once they're going to receive a free trip, once it's been decided.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
So you're saying that you want this to go in with this at the same time? Is that what you're saying?
No, I was just, I was just confused that the order of.
Just an order of, yeah, that was helpful to actually walk through that, yeah. And, um, you know, the form has a few, because one of the things that we talked about in governance was, you know, there's one section in this policy that says, you know, all of these things have to be, happen in order for the trip to be approved, remember? I forgot where that is in here now, but, um, so when I went back and looked at the form, there's a couple of things in there that, that, that weren't asked. Like, you know, um, the supervision and medical, the medical emergency plan, that kind of thing. So when you go to look at this little checklist on the back, you know, I wanted there to be some kind of a question on the front that tied into it. So you didn't have to be guessing, well, I wonder if, right? And then obviously when the person's here speaking about the trip, if there's any questions you have, they, they can fill in the blanks and you could determine whether or not. So I think if we do this checklist, then we're, we know that we're following the policy. Do you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
So, that's the only way I could think of to do it, you know, and I, and you guys approved the trip, so this way, this just gets added into the, to the record, right? And if you don't approve it, for whatever reason, it says why.
So I'll make a motion to approve policy I J O A A dash R dash one with the, um, with the changes made to, um.
Section J.
Section J, uh, as discussed.
Second.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Make a motion to approve the changes made to the form, the policy I J O A A dash E as presented.
Second.
Questions? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, alright, I'll make those changes. Send them along and.
Yeah, you can do that Barbie, but I could also do that, cause we, we took yours and put it on the form. We, you know, this little thing.
Oh, okay.
So I can just make those changes if you want.
Okay, you have the, you have the.
Here's what I wrote down, just to make sure. So it's gonna say, any use of private vehicles for transportation of students to or from school on field trips, athletic events, or other school functions. Um, when the school, whoa, 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 whoa. When the school isn't otherwise providing transportation from a contracted service, must have prior authorization by the superintendent designee.
Okay?
Yep. Alright, so I can make that change.
Okay, so I did just give you this policy, um, K F, uh, dash R, community use of school facilities. Um, I did just find a typo at, on number two, they just left out.
Can you hand me one, Pam?
Director of Building and Grounds?
Yeah. They just left out the N, grounds.
Yep, yeah.
So we just changed the title, uh, where, where it was incorrect just to, um. So the title has been changed and then number eleven, we omitted, uh, that, there was, pretty, well, eleven is still in there, but it was a pretty good sized paragraph which stated that.
Wellness policy.
Right, that whoever used our facilities had to, uh, go with the, follow the wellness policies, rules and things like that. So we took that out and it, so was, when schools have been closed due to inclement weather, was that?
No, that was still.
That was, that was eleven?
Yeah.
So we just took out the health and.
We renumbered, we renumbered.
So the health and wellness.
We just took out that one bullet paragraph.
So that's all that was changed in here.
So I'll make, I'll make that change there too.
So, we can vote on this because it's just a change and it's not the formal.
It's really not substant, substantive except.
Right, the, the title.
Paragraph we took out was really largely because it's not one that we're following anyway. It's very hard to police it, you know.
Um, so I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the changes on policy, uh, K F dash R, community use of school facilities. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so the, uh, middle high school principal focus group. Survey, which I did not.
Yeah, I just gave you a template, you didn't have to follow it. I just thought it would be helpful if we were gonna have a structured conversation to have some things that we commonly were talking about.
So you have, um.
Good questions. So I've already done this, this discussion, had this discussion with the administrative team.
Yep.
Um, I was just talking to Chloe before the meeting about how I can get input from the kids, so she's gonna work with me on that. I am thinking of putting together like a little survey, survey monkey survey, just similar to this, it's just three questions that just, you know, for people that don't participate in a focus group, but wanna have their input.
Of course.
Yeah, um, and then I have to talk, uh, I wanna talk with the PTA to figure out how I can do like a little parent focus group. In fact, I think, I know I have them with staff, I, I, the new, right after the new year, I have one at seven in the morning and one at two thirty in the afternoon because you catch different people. So I put that in the grapevine, so I'm doing that with the teachers. So then I just need to, probably have a coffee with Carol on the topic of the middle high school, you know, principal search. And, um, anybody who wants to come to that can do that and I'll probably do that in the early evening. Because I think the morning is just not when you're catching most people, so.
And so you've heard from teachers that wanna be on the committee, then how are you gonna solicit the parents?
Um, I'm gonna do a blog and, and then I probably will, um, have Margaret put it in her this week and.
And then the morning announcements.
Morning announcements, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And then I was just talking to Chloe about the best way to solicit the kids, you know, from her perspective, you know, so.
Yeah, I think that's really important, that the.
Yeah, I think, I think the kids.
Have a voice and they, you know, are heard and.
Yeah, and I, I think, I'm trying to think, I got, I think there were four staff members that expressed interest in it. But I'm, I'm sort of hoping that I'm gonna get some people that aren't teachers, you know, that would be part, would wanna participate as well, so.
What is your ideal number? I know we talked about this the last time, I don't have that.
I, yeah, I'd have to look at what we, what I said, I think I, it was somewhere in your sixteen, seventeen people, which is okay, which is, which is okay for something of import, as important as this. Um, you want different voices, you know, and really it's the interview process, right? That's the most cumbersome, you know. Um, but I posted it, I posted the job on school spring, it's today, today's Thursday, I posted it on Monday. Um, and, and then I, I did a job, I did a internal posting that I put up yesterday, so the word is, the word is out. In fact, I already think I got four applications.
I was gonna say.
Wow.
That's good. And Suzanne will be, um, serving on the committee from the school committee, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that's good. I look forward to that.
Yeah.
That process.
It's, it's gonna be. It's a process, right? I mean, there's a lot of steps to it and, I mean, you could just do it without having participation, but I don't think that's the right thing to do.
Our community.
I just don't think it's the right thing to do, you know? Not that we're gonna, not that, I mean, when we did it with the administrators, you know, there were some things that were very consistent, like, you know, instructional leadership. Um, you know, uh, you know, good org, you know, good management organizational skills, but, um, also, you know, uh, vis- visibility. You know, visibility and, you know, community, community minded, um, and experience, you know, in education, you know. Obviously that, that was important to the administrators, but, yeah, it was pretty consistent, I think, in many ways. I heard same time and themes, you know, coming.
Good.
But I don't know if there's anything you want, from the school committee's perspective, you want, I don't know if you took notes and you wanna just give them to me? Or if you wanna share your, you know, your main thoughts, you know, so that I can capture them to put you in the group.
Yeah, I'll, I'll definitely, I'll definitely send you and Suzanne something, some things.
Okay, good, alright, fine.
And I've sat on committees in the past for hiring of, you know, the vice principals and, um, you know, all kinds of staff members throughout the couple, you know, the years in Andover, so. I've got lists of questions that were generated, things like that.
Good. Thank you for doing that.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, so we have donations that we need to approve.
Yes.
Wouldn't it be a meeting without donations? So the PTA donated a thousand dollars towards the, um, that's a camp Kiev trip, which was very generous of them, because that can be rather pricey for that, uh, for that period of time.
Yeah, that's a big.
So, uh, I'll make a motion to accept the donation from the Georgetown PTA in the amount of one thousand dollars for Camp Kiev, as presented.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, PTA, that was nice. Uh, Heidi Beegan did a great job along with all the people that helped her put together such a nice holiday fair as usual, but that was really, that was a lot of money.
One day.
Yeah, so a total donation of three thousand five ninety-three eighty-five. So, um, it says here, so four hundred is gonna go to the Pearlie preschool and then the balance, three thousand one ninety-three eighty-five will go to the Penbrook school. That was very nice. Um, and that's a lot of work, that's not just, I mean, it's all in the day, but it takes a lot to solicit everybody that was there and. So I will make a motion to accept the very generous donation of three thousand five ninety-three eighty-five to be distributed as follows. Four hundred dollars to the Pearlie preschool revolving account and three thousand one ninety-three eighty-four to the Penbrook school extended day revolving account with gratitude.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
That was very nice. Very successful. And we have another donation, uh, we have a twenty-five dollar donation, which is very nice, of Fleece and Tees of America to donate to the high school athletic account.
I guess that's my question in the memo, if I'm reading, it looks like fifteen back to DECA.
Oh, it, isn't it, which?
On the fleece and tees.
You know what, it does say that and I, yeah, fifty, in their memo line, it says fifteen percent back to DECA. From four hooded sales, so I, so.
Oh, was this from during the holiday fair?
Yes, it was, so, so, yes, because there was discussion about, um.
Competitor?
Competitor, that's what it was.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so this twenty-five should go back to.
DECA.
Okay, so let's put it to that.
Okay, so we, yes, so not to the athletic, so, uh, I will make a motion to accept the generous donation from Fleece and Tees of America in the amount of twenty-five dollars, which will go to, uh, the DECA group.
Second.
Second.
Questions, anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sounds a good, very nice, yes, thank you for that. Michael? Uh, this is an athletic donation.
Now, here is my question on these. Are these donations or are they purchasing a service? Not a service, but are they, are they purchasing the right to hang a banner?
Yep.
Or are they, which, and we are putting the money into the account and I get that, but is it?
It's for a banner. Five hundred dollars for a banner.
But we, because we did, um, accept the donations from, or donations, the money from Noonan's and the other.
We did.
Right.
Places too, but that is a good point. It's not really a donation, it is a service that they're.
Because that's how they had, um, solicited them through the letters.
That's right, they had said, would they like to make a donation to the athletic revolving account?
Well, then are we, I mean, it's tricky from a tax perspective. Are we providing a five hundred dollar service that they can write off? Are we giving them a tax receipt, for example, if it did an donation, like?
I think we'll need to look into it.
Okay.
Yeah, you know what?
Certainly happy to accept it, but.
Well, I don't know the answer to that.
So. So what do we have to look into?
The fact of whether it is a donation or whether they're purchasing.
Right, no, not a gift.
Or purchasing a banner.
Just purchasing the banner or they're purchasing advertising really, cause they're advertising there.
We're gonna get the banners.
Right.
Are they renting the banner, is it in the same category as renting the fields, renting a space?
Yes, no, you know what, Michael brought up the point, so they're paying to advertise, is what they're doing. So if we're providing the banners, right, they're advertising on those banners.
Right, so the money is for advertising.
And then it's, and then they're not, then they would need to pay us again, is that correct?
I feel like it, to me, it's the same thing as, as the lacrosse club or whatever was over the summer renting the turf field. As these guys putting up a banner. Because they're, they're paying for a, a block of time and a block of space.
This is a yearly thing, right?
Yes.
Well, the upfront, I think, was one year and then they paid for like a.
Less than that, yeah.
Because the banner's already purchased.
Right.
Something to look into.
But it seems to me.
I'm just trying to think about what.
It could be in the category of renting because.
How we're framing the question. So it's, it's a question of whether it's a donation or a, a purchase of service, but.
Well, because it is different in terms of your taxes too.
Well, I think that's the thing that's making me wonder. So if you wanted to get a tax credit for it, you'd rather it be.
Honestly, it doesn't actually matter too much with this company, so they're writing it off either way.
Right.
But if a, if a person were to do it.
Right.
Is it a donation or is it a purchase?
And what would be more beneficial to them?
A donation. Because if they're, if they're buy. Because, cause you can't write it off if we're, if we are providing back to the customer a five hundred dollar service and by this we mean the right to hang a banner on a wall, then they're actually not providing any donateable value.
Right, they're, they're purchasing advertising.
Right. It feels to me like it's a purchase. Yeah, it's a, it's a.
We do need to look into it.
Okay, so you can do that, you can look into that.
So, so what do you wanna, we just won't.
Well, I would say we'll accept it, just we've accepted the others and it can't hurt, but forward.
Okay, so I am.
It's nice to recognize.
Look at the letter again. Yeah, wait, yeah, definitely.
We can do it in one motion, can't we?
Can we get all of it?
Which one?
All three of them.
The two, athletic and one. There's, there's two athletics.
And one food service.
And one food service.
Oh, oh.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay, so we'll do the athle, right, so Conti, right. So I will make a motion to accept the donation of five hundred dollars from Conti Gamberrandino Funeral Home for the purchase of an advertising banner to be displayed on the turf field fence, as well as, um, the a five hundred dollar donation from Obash School of Driving to purchase the same.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you to both of those businesses for supporting the, um, athletics. Because I do think that's gonna be a great, I think it's gonna look great with the way the banners will all look. But I appreciate that, good for them. I think it's going to look great with the way the banners will all look, but I appreciate that, good for them. And you'll get back to us as to how we want to, because we could, hopefully, we could have these rolling in, right? Okay, and we have an anonymous, uh, donation to food services, once again, which is very nice of this group to continue to do that, I will make a motion to accept the anon- anonymous donation of $105 for the food services program with gratitude.
So what?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we are good, unless anybody thinks I missed anything. I don't have my agenda, because I... Okay, good, there it is. Okay, so, uh, we do have to have an executive session this evening, so at this time, I will, um, make a motion to adjourn the regular session, regular session meeting at 9:11. We will not be returning to, um, open meeting, we do have to go into executive session, under chapter 30A, section 21, for the purchase, for the purpose of discussion, discussing, uh, contract negotiations.
With the union, union personnel.
With union personnel, um, but before we sign off, I do, uh, just want to say we won't be seeing people until 2018, so I want to wish everybody safe and happy holidays around this time of year, uh, and I hope you all are safe, and see you in 2018. Vote call, vote.
Happy New Year.
So what?
Oh, so moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Great, thank you, good night.
Good night. Can you put this in your thing?